Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting, our inaugural meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Monday, September 21st to order. First off, any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, first up, we have approval of the agenda.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Bothwell?
I'd like to request a change to the order of the agenda. If we could move up the fifth wheel, 10.1 and 10.2 to under 7, 7.1, because I feel that it's an item that we need our full attention. And by the time we get to 11 o'clock at the end of this agenda, it'll be quite long. And I think it's, for the public that are listening in, it would be great to have this further up on the agenda. Thank you.
That'll be noted. Thank you, Councilor Bothwell. I don't see anything else. Any other changes to the agenda?
Yeah, Mayor Jordan, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I wanted to add a motion. I had it to the clerk. Some correspondence. Just one second, I'm going to get it and read it on my computer. Okay, so I wanted to add an item of correspondence to the Province of Ontario regarding the 10-person gathering limits. Do you have to read the whole motion now, or can I just, can we vote on it and we can consider it later?
That's up to council whether they want to hear it. Yeah, Counselor Cadwell wants to hear it. Counselor Vane wants to hear it. So why don't you read it, Counselor Sharp?
Okay, so what I've written here is, sorry, I'm looking down at my computer. Whereas the Province of Ontario has reduced the size of gatherings only in private residences and not in businesses, schools, or churches, and whereas all Canadians are guaranteed the basic freedom of association, giving us the right to organize formally and informally with our loved ones and family in our private homes. And whereas these gatherings are still permitted in Ontario, but only in monitored settings that are staffed businesses, therefore be it resolved that to send this correspondence to the Premier of Ontario, asking the province to either limit all gatherings if it can be demonstrated that it is the only way to protect public health, or to reconsider the limit on only private gatherings. CC, MPP, Sam Musterhoff, and all Ontario municipalities. I'd like to consider that in our regular business later in the meeting. And just if I could speak to it, it's only a letter to the province asking him either to make it mandatory for all places, or not to make it mandatory in only our private residence. And so I would just like to hear it later. Like, we can vote on it later, and it could be defeated, or it could be carried.
Yeah, that'll come under new business in portion of our agenda.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Jordan.
Yep. And we need a mover and seconder now for approval of the amended agenda. Counselor Vardy and Counselor Bothwell. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting of September 21st, 2020 be approved as amended as follows. Move item 10.1 and 10.2 to section 7.1. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
And myself, I'm a yes, so that's carried. Okay. All right, our second part of the approval of agenda, that's Counselor Sharp's motion. Need a mover and seconder for that?
I'll second it.
Counselor Sharp, Counselor Vane?
Sorry, so just to clarify, Mayor Jordan, this vote here will just allow it to be on the agenda, and later there would be a vote whether we approve it or not.
That's correct.
The vote now is just to allow it.
Yes, that's correct, Counselor Sharp. I'll read the resolution. Move by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting of September 21st, 2020 be approved as amended as follows. To add as new business requiring two-thirds majority to discuss tonight regarding resolution to send correspondence to Premier of Ontario on limit of gatherings. Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
No.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
No.
Counselor Ritchie?
No.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Sure, yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. So that is carried. Up next, we have item 4A, Committee of Adjustment Minutes. Need a mover and seconder. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Vane. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the Committee of Adjustment Minutes from February 4th, June 23rd, and July 21st be received. There's no discussion on this, it's just receiving. All in favor? Or recorded vote, I guess, because we're on a Zoom meeting. Counselor Bothwell?
Or did you say all three meetings?
Yes, February 4th, June 23rd, and July 21st.
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
And myself, I'm a yes, that's carried. Item 4B, or sorry, item 5, Delegations. Need a mover and seconder. Counselor Vane, Counselor Cadwell. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Cadwell. Resolve that the yeah. All right, so before I read that, we'll have the delegation. Cassandra, welcome.
Hi, sorry about that. Can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Sorry. Do you want me to just tell you when to change the slide, then? Is that? Do that?
Sandra, you have remote control access, so you can change it yourself.
Oh, fancy. Mayor Jordan and members of the council, town staff, and members of the public. My name is Cassandra Best, and I'm manager of fund development at the Alzheimer's Society of Niagara Region. But I'm also a daughter of a wonderful woman who is living with young onset dementia. So this is very personal for me, and I really wanted to thank you for giving me this chance to appear here before you and talk about sort of the state of dementia in Niagara right now, and some of our fundraising initiatives. So let's see, how do I, I'm sorry, how do I change the slide? In Niagara, there are 10,524 people living with a progressive dementia, the most common being Alzheimer's disease, and it is fatal, and there is no cure. Anyone can develop it. The society, in the past year, we served 9,760 individuals, received 1,998 new referrals, and educated 9,750 Niagara residents and frontline staff on dementia. We also saw a 200% increase in attendance at our elder abuse presentations. And we provided over 12,400 hours of respite services to help prevent caregiver burnout, and had over 5,700 hours of volunteer service in our many programs. This year, we have seen an unprecedented challenge, and since it is our mission to advocate for and with persons with dementia and their care partners, that is why we are here, I'm here before you today virtually to deliver this message. COVID-19 is impacting our clients very significantly. People living with dementia are already facing deep stigmatization, and the isolation that they live in with every day has become so much worse. In our client outreach program, it is not uncommon for a person living with dementia or a care partner to tell us that the Alzheimer's Society is the only one checking in on them regularly. One telecare client said, "Thank you for calling. It gets so lonely. Please call me again. You can call me every day if you would like." Care partners are also feeling very lonely right now. One told us, "I was doing okay until you called me. Now I'm so touched and emotional. No one has called me to ask me how I am, and I'm so grateful to you and the Alzheimer's Society for checking in." I'm sorry, slide, can we change the slide again? Or, oh, did I do it? And I went too far. I don't know how to go back, I'm sorry. Another alarming message that we would like to point out is that as of September 10th, 64.6% of all COVID-19 deaths in Ontario have been among long-term care residents. And in Ontario, nine in 10 long-term care residents have some form of cognitive impairment, including two-thirds of them with dementia. Age is the biggest risk factor for dementia, and older people are the most at-risk group for COVID-19. That is why, perhaps now more than ever before, it is imperative that we talk about dementia. We need to keep, keep the discussion going, seek out information, advice, and support. Programs and services provided by the Alzheimer's Society, such as counseling, care partner education, support groups, social recreation activities, and so much more, have been known to delay admission to long-term care and improve quality of life for people with dementia and their care partners. Oh, I did it. But every year, we must fundraise over half a million dollars to provide these essential services, which have been adapted and continued throughout COVID-19. And also due to COVID-19, we've had to cancel many of our fundraising events, like why we're all virtual today. With these setbacks, as well as uncertainty and the changing landscape brought on by the pandemic, fundraising has become much more difficult. So we responded by shifting gears and adapting to create new innovative ways to raise much-needed funds for our programs. The first fundraising event that we introduced this summer is called Social with a Purpose, and it is, in essence, an adapted version of our Coffee Break fundraiser that we have had in past years. As social distancing and physical isolation became part of our daily routines, we began to understand the overwhelming feelings of loss and loneliness that being separated from the community can bring us. These feelings that people living with dementia often experience in their normal, day-to-day lives. Social with a Purpose is a do-it-yourself fundraising program that seeks to combat those feelings of loneliness and isolation. Now more than ever, it is important for us to find new creative ways to stay connected to our friends and family, and at the same time, we can raise funds for important services for people with dementia, to ensure they're not isolated. The idea behind the Social with a Purpose was to create a fundraiser that is unique and easy to participate in. We also wanted to create something that really benefits the community by encouraging creative and intentional social connection. To host a Social with a Purpose is simple. All you need to do is go to AlzheimerNaiba.ca/social. You can just create a URL and share that if you want, or host a virtual event. Perhaps yoga, or if you have a book club that gets together, whatever that might be. One of our longtime Coffee Break supporters is Shalom Manor in Grimsby. They have put on a phenomenal event in the past and are doing a smaller, a smaller event locally with their internally on October 21st. So we're very grateful to Shalom Manor for their support as well. Another fundraising initiative that we're putting on this year is entirely online auction. The auction will begin on World Alzheimer Day, which is today, September 21st, and it will run until October 21st. The link to the auction website is 32auctions.com/ASNR. All of the auction items have been generously donated by businesses and individuals within the community. Some examples of prizes are a private sightseeing tour of Toronto, signed sports memorabilia, a designer handbag, and so much more. And lastly, a raffle, which I, is also starting today and will run until December 1st. Participants have the opportunity to win some great prizes, a two-night romantic Niagara Falls package, a Roomba vacuum, a case of great wine, a foursome of golf at Peninsula Lakes, and so much more. You can help us by selling tickets or purchasing tickets. There's a website available for that as well. But mostly, in conclusion, how you can help. First of all, if you know someone living with dementia, or you know just a caregiver, please just reach out to them and see how they're doing. Maybe after months of isolation, you're just starting to get together with some people or speaking to some people you haven't in a while, some, maybe some older relatives, and you notice that something's different with them, they're maybe not understanding, or they're asking questions over and over again. Reach out for support. We are still here. We're still here to support you, and you do not need to wait for a doctor referral. You can come to the Alzheimer's Society right away. We're here to help you at any stage of your journey. We also would like to continue to encourage the federal government to reduce the human and economic impact of dementia by developing a response to the World Health Organization Global Action Plan on Dementia. You know, that doesn't get as much conversation anymore with everything else going on. This year is very different, and it requires a lot of creativity. But believe me when I say, every little bit that you can do for someone living with dementia here in our neighborhood makes a difference. It really counts. You can host a Social with a Purpose fundraiser, formerly known as Coffee Break. You can support us by donating or participating in our auction and raffle. And finally, you can spread the word to family and friends and just keep the conversation going. Keep, keep people thinking of dementia. Keep it somewhat in the forefront where we, we don't, let's not forget about them. In whatever way we can, we just hope that you will help us. Thank you so much for your time and consideration for helping make a difference in your community today, and for those living with dementia in Grimsby and throughout the region. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation, Cassandra. Any questions from council? Counselor Vane?
Hi, Cassandra. Thank you for coming. I just want to thank you for what you do. I do have a relative who has quite severe dementia, and I guess my concern is, like with many charities that I'm involved in, how else are you looking at raising money? What other suggestions or ideas do you have? Because I know there's, every charity right now is struggling, and they need to find ways to raise money, and it is an excellent cause. I've seen the damage that dementia can do to people. So what else are you doing to try and raise money? Some of the ideas you've got so far are good, but they seem like they're not going to bring in a lot. Have you got other ideas?
Well, we are working on some grants as well. We are working on planning other sort of donations, but if I'm being perfectly honest, a lot of our fundraising was event-driven previously, which is what's making this very difficult. We were lucky that the business community stepped up for our cancelled golf tournament, and they turned sponsorship into a donation. So we didn't have as significant of a loss as that one, but this one, which was formerly Coffee Break, is being a bit more of a challenge, but we're working on other things. We're also launching, trying to really work with our donors to get maybe some kind of a monthly donor program going, and then working, starting to talk a bit more about planned giving, which is something that we haven't had a lot of time to do. So I suppose in a way, that's a blessing, that we have a bit more time to work on that and really sort of develop those relationships with our supporters, because we do have a lot of volunteers and a lot of donors. It's just, like you're saying, it's sort of maybe that critical mass that events do really bring.
Okay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Best of luck. I do know how serious this disease is, and I would encourage everybody to really try and give if they can, but like I said, I know there's a lot of competition right now, and I wish you the very best. Of luck with it. Thank you again for coming out.
Thank you.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you. Worship through you to our presenter. A great presentation, Cassandra. Thank you. And I have an idea, but I prefer to discuss it with you after the meeting. Maybe we could connect tomorrow in the way of a fundraiser. So if we could get in together and see if it's a viable idea, we'll go from there. Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've done some great work.
Thank you.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Cassandra.
Hi.
Great presentation. Thank you very much. I'm also very aware of this terrible affliction. A few of my relatives have had it and has it, and it's certainly devastating for the family as well as the, as well as the afflicted. I'm just curious, you mentioned you have a 50-50 draw. Where, I have not, I've seen lots of tickets being sold for the hospital, but I haven't seen any 50-50 draws around town for Alzheimer's. Can you tell us where your tickets are? Because I wouldn't mind going out and buying a bunch.
Yeah, so actually, ours is not a 50-50. It's just some items, and we literally just launched it today. Like, we sort of planned everything to start today. We just, we literally got the license at the end of the day on Thursday, so it's been a bit of a mad rush. But we can get tickets. We actually have a website where you can access, to access getting some online, or you can call and do it over the phone, and we can set up a way to sell, purchase the tickets. But I'll be honest with you, if any of you would be able to take some tickets, if I could deliver them to you, that would also be a huge way that you can help. Like, if you have a space where, you know, people are coming, or if you have people in City Hall or something, that would also be helpful.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you can advise the, our town clerk, Sarah, and she can circulate an email to all of us that we will be aware of what you're doing, and also circulated around the community where we are, you know, we all know lots of people in the community, and lots of places in the community. So maybe you can just let us know through her, and we can, we can go from there.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Lots of luck.
Thank you.
Counselor Vardy? Counselor Vardy, you're muted.
Thank you, Cassandra. I have a question for you. And by the way, while others were talking, I went on to your website, and I can see quite a bit about your raffle and your auction. Just looks, looks pretty good. I wanted to ask you, what, what advice do you give to someone if you think, if you think a friend or someone you know has got the beginnings of dementia?
I would say to call us, like, right away. Like, I really feel that's one thing that people, people feel like they have to wait for things to be bad before they get help, but most people find that they get the help, but as soon as they get the help, they wish they'd gotten it earlier. Like, really, there's no, no referral is needed by, no diagnosis is needed even. So to really just call us, and we will put you in touch with the right programs and services, either within our organization or even with others that exist throughout the region as well.
And are there any, like, online diagnostic tools that someone could access?
Um, I'm not, I'm not as familiar with that, and I don't think I feel comfortable being able to give you an answer to that. It is, unfortunately, this diagnosis is, it's a complex process, and I'm also not, I'm more the fund development marketing girl, so I also wouldn't want to lead you astray with that.
All right. Thank you very much, Cassandra.
No problem.
Thank you. Counselor Cadwell, I see your hands up.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Am I, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, I can't find that sidebar to unmute myself, but yeah, thanks. Thank you, Cassandra, for the awareness presentation. It's very important that the message gets brought out to the community, and you did it in a very good way. Just a couple of questions I do have. Does the Alzheimer's Society, are they under, at all, the United Way umbrella to receive any funding to your organization?
We do receive some United Way funding. We do have a question, we do get this question, I would say, usually every year around this time. And I know that if you do want to designate your funds, because some people, they have it deducted from their payroll, it can be deducted to us through the United Way. You just have to let them know that. So I'm not sure if that's exactly what you're asking, but we have also, I know United Way has been administering some of these emergency COVID grants, and we have received some through them as well. And through that, we've been able to start, we actually have 50 tablets that we're preloading so that people can join. If they're, if they don't have a device, they can join some of our programming. And then another 100 kits that are for people who are completely not comfortable with virtual, that they can access activity kits for them and their care partner, for something to them, for them to do for stimulation. But yeah, we, we receive some funding. I'm sorry, I went off a bit of a tangent, but I'm not sure if that's what you're asking.
No, that's great, Cassandra. You answered the question very well, and plus gave information that it's good for the people to know. The other thing, I just want to, maybe we can work with staff on this. I know in the past, for a number of years, the Coffee Break has been a very good fundraiser, and now that, as you mentioned, I don't believe that we're able to do it because of the COVID situation. So what I was wondering, and hopefully council will support this, and with a staff recommendation, that the money that we would normally raise through the Coffee Break fundraising venture, that maybe we can find some funds through our Hydro Stipit to maybe, you know, put some money, to keep that, keep that money, that money flowing to you people, even though they're not able to run the Coffee Break fundraiser. But I think that's, I'll have some discussion with, with council and staff. I think that'd be a great, great venture to participate in through our Hydro Stipit fund. So yeah, great presentation, and you have yourself a great day, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any further questions from council? Seeing none, thank you again very much, Cassandra. Again, an excellent presentation for a cause that is very worthwhile, and even more worthwhile, and, and we want to get your funding done for this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Pamela, oh, sorry, I got to read the resolution. Up next, we have Pamela, oh, sorry, I got to read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Bane, seconded by Counselor Cadwell. Result that the delegation from Cassandra Best, Alzheimer's Society in Niagara region be received. Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp said yes. Counselor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I mean, yes.
Muted.
Let's carry it up. I saw your hand. Up next, we have Pamela Blackwood and Murray Bane from McNally House Hospice. Pamela and Murray, welcome.
Good afternoon, hello.
Hi, how are you?
We're good, very good.
So, good evening, Mayor Jordan and members of town council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to our request. I am pleased to be here with our board president, Chair Murray Bane. And our thanks to Counselors Vardy and Cadwell for assisting in bringing our request forward to council. This evening, we are seeking your support in waiving the fees associated with two zoning bylaw amendment applications that we will be submitting to the town of Grand Bay in the near future. McNally House Hospice has been working these last 12 months in preparing a zoning bylaw amendment application to amend the zoning of the property we own at 19 Lindwood Avenue to permit access to the vacant parcel of lands adjacent to McNally House and provide a parking area to support an expanded new 10-bed residential hospice. The existing six-bed residential hospice that everybody knows as McNally House is proposed to be re-adapted for day hospice use to facilitate community outreach related to hospice palliative care services to those in our community who are living with a life-limiting illness and their caregivers, but are not yet in need of the residential hospice services. As similar to the property at 19 Lindwood, we are submitting a zoning bylaw amendment application to permit a parking area to support a use permitted within the institutional zone of the hospice.
So as our community continues to grow, so does the need for both residents of the hospice, but equally important, their families encircle around them as they prepare for end of life and to be there for those left after the person passes with care and support. And therefore, we believe this work is timely and imperative. We are of the knowledge that other communities in Ontario have put in place mechanisms to allow for waiving or reduction of planning fees for the charitable sector. For instance, in Hamilton, there's a program in place for nonprofits which enables the charity to submit a formal fee waiver application form, which waives off fees prior to submission. In a year like this, where fund development, fund development charities has been extremely challenging and the additional cost to keep our residents and their families safe from COVID-19, we put a large burden on our existing budget. The fees of $30,830 for zoning bylaw amendment application have been quite daunting. Nearly every dollar of the building of the new hospice and the repurposing of the existing hospice, hospice into day hospice will need to be raised by people in the communities of West Niagara. So as an organization that provides a valuable service to the people of this community, we want to complete this project as economically as possible. And we'd like to be able to put the funds, of course, of the funds that are raised into bricks and mortar and keep the fees to a minimum. So therefore, on behalf of McNally House Hospice, we formally request that the town of Grimsby consider reducing or waiving the fees for our upcoming zoning bylaw amendment application submissions. We, we previously shared our plans with our counselors, Leah Vardy and Dave Caldwell, as well as yourself, Mayor Jordan. Last summer, they had the opportunity to visit McNally House, come to review our vision. And we invite any of you, of the others that would like to come by for a tour, to please reach out. So thank you very much for your consideration of this matter. And just wonder if anyone would have any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Pamela Murray. Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I think this is awesome to hear that we're going to get an additional 10 beds for the hospice. I think it's a much-needed service and I really, really appreciate that this is moving forward. When I look at the Planning Act in section 69, point 2, it does provide for, despite a tariff for fees established under the council, planning board committee may waive the requirement for the payment of a fee in respect to the application where the council planning board committee is satisfied that it would be unreasonable to require payment in accordance with this tariff. So I think this is a great opportunity to use that section of the Planning Act to do some really good in the community. So I'm very supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Cadwell, I think you had your hand up, and then Counselor Frake?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thank you for the presentation, folks from McNally House. Question I do have, and maybe, Mayor, you can help me out, or Counselor Vardy. Does the region also, are there charges from the region with regards to the, this planned project of McNally House? Just wondering if the region would maybe consider waiving their fees too. So I look forward to information from you or Counselor Vardy on that. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get back to you. Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to Counselor Cadwell and Counselor Vardy for, for moving this forward. And thank you, Murray and Pamela, for the presentation. It's fantastic news to hear that you're adding more space, 10 beds to the, to the facility. That's fantastic news. And if there's anything we can help, I certainly will, will throw my hat in the ring and vote for it. So I don't know how we move this forward, but I look forward to some type of resolution or motion to do this. Thank you very much for your presentation and lots of luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes, thank you for, for coming forward. I'm so glad to see this on the agenda. I just want to tell you how supportive I am of, of this initiative. It's a wonderful thing, and it's a, it's an amazing service you provide for the community. And I'm, I'm completely in support of doing whatever we can to contribute to, to help facilitate this building being, you know, constructed as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vardy. Counselor Bane, I see your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is absolutely fantastic, and I look forward to supporting it. But I do have a concern. A number of months ago, I think it was last year, actually, Counselor Vardy and a few others raised some concerns about giving hydro money to charities and stuff like that. And there was, felt that there were other ways to support them. I'm concerned that we're sending a, a bad mess. While I do fully support this and will support this, I'm just concerned the message we're sending is that we're, we're kind of cherry picking who we support, and that's not a good message. So that's the only thing I'm going to say about that. But I will be supporting this one. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? We need a mover and seconder for this, and it will be referred back to staff at this point. Oh, Counselor Frake, you want to speak again? So we're, or mover, Counselor Frake, mover?
I just wanted, I'm not sure I understood what Counselor Bane was saying, because I, I'd like for Counselor Vardy to clarify that, because I, I'm not sure I heard that correctly. Can you, can you explain that, Counselor Vardy, about the, I don't know where the hydro fees fit in here. I don't think there's any connections there.
I can get, yeah, there's exactly a commission. There is a connection to, Gamru was one, Fort was another. They were both raised as.
I think that was, that was a totally, we're talking about, we're talking about development charges here. It's a different thing altogether.
It's still money from the town, either way. So I'm, I'm not saying I don't support it. I'm just saying we have to be more inclusive if we're going to consider this kind of thing. That's all. Listen, I think, fantastic.
If I can break in here, I think the only person that mentioned hydro fees tonight was Counselor Cadwell, quite honestly.
I'm not talking, as I said quite clearly, I said several months ago. I believe it was last year. That's all.
Okay. We need a seconder for this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may speak, I, I had my hand raised.
All right.
Just, just as a point of clarification, there are, we call them stipends that, that are basically fees paid on behalf of various counselors' participation on boards where other board members are paid. And, you know, historically, they've been put into a, a fund and then dispersed. And to be clear, I'm, I'm not in favor of that. I think any of the revenues that, that come back to counselors' participation should go into our general revenue fund. I don't like the idea of sort of giving out, you know, plums to this or that. However, what we're looking for here is, is an exemption that is articulated in the Planning Act that allows us to do this. And it's for something very specific, and, and that's the reason I support it. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'd like to comment, I mean, I respect counselors' opinions, but I witnessed this, the hydro stipend for, since 2006, and it's been a very good program. All the money goes back to the community, or the majority of the money, or any time that we're donating, it's donated back to the community. So I, I think it's a great program, and I, I hope we stay with it. Thank you.
If I can ask for clarification, I don't believe there's a formal program or a bylaw or anything that actually allows us to do that. So if, if that's the case, then we need to have a report from staff about how this is going to be done and, and how we're going to make those decisions in terms of how we distribute that money. Instead of it being kind of one-offs, there, there should be a policy around how that's done. And as I understand it, I don't think there is one with the town of Grimsby as yet.
But, but, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think we've dug on off topic a bit here.
Absolutely. I just need a seconder for this resolution. Counselor Ritchie? Moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Ritchie. Result that the delegation from Pamela Blackwood and Murray Bane, McNally House Hospice, we received and referred back to staff. Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I mean, yes, that's carried. Our next delegation is Mr. George Trefonovic regarding the Fifth Wheel Project. Welcome, George. George is calling in through audio, so he's muted right now, but we're getting the technicalities worked on as we speak.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to speak tonight. Our discussion today is in regards to the Fifth Wheel Development. And to let you know, we provide our full support for the project. The builder has presented a complete and viable plan for affordable residential housing units, as well as for thousands of square meters of commercial employment space that the town of Grimsby and region of Niagara require to meet its current and future growth needs. The town of Grimsby needs enough population to support employment lands to attract professional businesses. This project will attract top talent entrepreneurs and innovators to our community, which is essential for improving our future business prospects and living standards. The builder is willing to make a very large investment to provide extensive infrastructure that will be needed for this project and the surrounding area. They have architected an excellent design for the building. They have accommodated this design over the years to meet required specifications. To keep per-unit costs affordable, bearing in mind the enormous cost to build the infrastructure, the scale of the project is good. The infrastructure for this project will be funded by the builder without cost to Grimsby taxpayers. The quickly escalating home prices and property taxes are making it hopeless for new home buyers to enter the town of Grimsby housing market and are sadly forcing senior residents on fixed incomes to leave their family homes because they can no longer be afforded. The Fifth Wheel Project provides the right solution for the town of Grimsby, which has a high demand for land within its urban boundaries. There is a desperate shortage of housing in all municipalities of the region of Niagara, largely brought on by the lack of action to promote housing starts and the required infrastructure. The benefits for completing this project are immeasurable for the town of Grimsby as it will provide mixed use, or the point one, mixed-use affordable housing units with condos and town houses to accommodate an aging population who seek a maintenance-free lifestyle. Next point, supports the lifestyle demand by the influx of young urban professionals that will be drawn to the area. Next point, commercial unemployment spaces of excellence. Next point, a parkland area, almost 3.5 acres, to be dedicated to the town for the extension of the West End waterfront trail. Next point, immediate employment opportunities for engineering specialists, designers, and trades of all types during and after the life cycle of the build for the project. Next point, suitable parking accommodations for residences and businesses. Next point, a short walk to the new Casablanca Corporate Center and the Grimsby Go train station. Next point, a short commute to the Grimsby Hospital and area schools. Next point, growth to the customer base and revenues for many nearby businesses. Final point, generation of much-needed tax revenues for the town. People want to live where they work, and this project will effectively improve traffic congestion and home affordability costs by reducing or eliminating commute times and the need for families to have multiple cars. This project will lie, will lie within a major transit station area, that is, the Go train station. Technically, these lands that are designated, are designated within an approximate 5 to 800-meter radius of a transit station or stop, primarily along existing or planned transit corridors. This designation has been mandated by the province to meet the forecasted increase in population growth that all municipalities are expected to follow. There are a number of our town of Grimsby businesses and constituents that have echoed their support for this project and the benefits it will provide, as well as for other projects and developments to allow for growth in the community. Thank you, some of the Trefonovic brothers.
Thank you, George. Council, we're going to hold off on questions because we're going to be talking about this site later in the, in the meeting. So again, thank you, George, for your presentation. Need a mover and seconder to receive this. Counselor Dunstall and Counselor Sharp? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Sharp. Result that the delegation from George Trefonovic be received. Just need to show a hands. And that's carried.
Should I stay on the phone or can I go to the video now, the video streaming?
You can go to the video. Thank you, George. We're, we're gonna, any questions will be dealt with later in the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to sign off now. Bye-bye.
Right. Up now, we're at item six, the consent agenda. Any changes? Counselor Bothwell?
I'd just like to lift.
I'd just like to lift the Parks and Rec Report, DRS 2006, at 6.2A, the Playground Tender Award, please, for discussion.
All right, that will be noted as being lifted. We'll discuss that separately. Any other changes? Items lifted? Councillor Vardy?
Sorry, I can't see the agenda at the same time. I'm seeing everybody else here, but I do want to lift the purchase of the truck for the fire department.
All right, that's 6.1A, the Fire Command Vehicle. That's noted. Councillor Frack? Councillor Frack, I think you're muted.
Sorry, my button didn't work. Is this only to deal with the asterisk items?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, something else, but anyway, that's good. Fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just need a mover and a second for the consent agenda. Councillor Bothwell and councillor Dunstall. Moved by councillor Bothwell, second by councillor Dunstall. Result that the Committee of the Whole hereby approves the following items and the various consent items be given effect on the recommendation as contained therein. Referred matters list dated September 21, 2020, report DRS 20-07, report DPW 20-27, report DPW 20-28, report DPW 20-30, report DPW 20-33, report DPW 20-34, report DPW 20-35, and report PA 2020. Any discussion? There's no, sorry, there's no discussion on that. Recorded vote, councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Frack? Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councillor Sharp?
Yes.
Councillor Bain?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, that's carried. Now, we'll deal with the lifted reports separately. Report FCR 20-07, the Fire Command Vehicle. Pardon? Okay, sorry. All right, we do 10.1 first. Where am I? The Planning and Development Delegation. Dave Ashton, MHBC Planning, regarding the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment.
Point of order, sorry, point of order on this one? Just we have to finalize the consent items, and then we weren't going to go to the report on the Fifth Wheel until 7.1.
Clarification?
Well, councillors, so all the reports that were lifted will be addressed during its normal order. So report FCR 2007 would come under the Administration and Finance Report, and the DRS 2006 would come under section 8.1 now. Thank you.
All right, welcome, Dave.
Good evening.
Call back for it. Okay, I gotta go. Bye. I gotta go. Okay, where are we?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay? Great, thank you. Just wanted to, this evening, there's myself, Bill Lisk from Los Anni Homes, and Fred Luthany is on the call as well. If you don't mind, we'll use our time to split up between the three of us. And Bill's going to go first, and then myself, and then Fred, but we'll still stick within the time limit.
All right, that's great.
So with that, Mayor Jordan, I'll turn it over to Bill Lisk.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. I just want to take you several years, especially the last year, based on community involvement and staff comments. There were seven items. I'll go through them fairly quickly. So I satisfy the Conservation Authority. And so there's an eco passage that runs through the site. It's now satisfactory to the Conservation Authority. We had to satisfy the region Niagara. They had comments on the building design and employment spaces. They're satisfied.
I haven't just can't see it.
In terms of community involvement, we had comments about parking. And we can now say that we're now fully compliant with the amount of parking spaces provided. And there's even bonus parking.
I want to interrupt.
Cutting out, cutting out too?
Yeah, I think the presenters that are not on right now will need to mute because we're getting a lot of background noise. And councillor Sharp, I think you might need to mute as well. Thank you.
Sir, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, that's much better now.
Okay, thank you. So the amount of parkland now is satisfactorily self-sufficient and balanced. We can confirm that the densities of the number of units now are under what is permitted. We've confirmed that the employment space provided is exactly what the town was requesting, inclusive of a 5,000 square foot restaurant, which will be fantastic on the waterfront. And lastly, the other commentary we received was the look and feel of the buildings. So through you, Mr. Chair, I wanted to confirm that what's before committee tonight is only a draft plan of subdivision and a zoning bylaw. The buildings are not before you. They are not being voted on. And the public should be aware that you're not approving the buildings tonight. These are conceptual only, and what we're looking forward to is the next stage. If committee approves the zoning tonight and refers it to council, and it's approved, we'll then go into the consultation process of collaboratively working up with a concept that works for the town of Grimsby, that works for the local residents. We'll have consultation with a design that has a homegrown approach based on ownership that lives and works in the town of Grimsby, and something we can all be proud of. I think Fred will be speaking to that in a moment. But based on those comments, I just wanted to say that we've done this in four municipalities recently. And especially now, in the current times, it's important to work together. And we just recently, two weeks ago, completed a master plan community in St. George. That's the county of Brant. And working through the master plan communities, all these items, the parking, the parkland, the densities, these are things that we need to work on. And we're glad that we've actually reached consensus, and we match the requirements of the town is what we've heard so far. So with that said, I just wanted to turn it over to Dave Aston, knowing that we only have a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, I don't want to take too much time either. We've had the opportunity to review the staff report. We've been working with staff for a number of years now. This just gives you some indication of since when the application was submitted to the neighborhood meeting, meetings with the town and agency, agencies, including the region, and then the public meeting, which was in January of 2020. And following that, additional meetings with the town and the peer reviewer that provided the report that was appended to the staff report this evening. So we have been working for years and nine months since the public meeting to address the details and comments that have been provided through the process. And I want to thank staff for meeting with us, making time available, identifying items to be addressed, and working with us through those to get to the recommendations before you this evening. I want to just get to some of the key design changes. These came through agency consultation, town staff comments, public comments. But really, they're increased and naturalized the channel that is through the site adjacent to the proposed Winston Road. So that becomes a feature and also provides a view corridor. We increased the setbacks between buildings throughout the site. Along the North Service Road, we minimize the amount of parking. There is still parking along that area, but we've moved the internal road and the parking back from the service road and provided additional lands for landscaping. All of that parking is additional to what is required by the town's bylaw. The bylaw, if you recall, when we first started, we were requesting a reduction from what was required from the town's zoning bylaw as a standard for mixed-use projects. Now, we're just requesting the town's bylaw requirements. We've worked to accommodate additional parking underground to meet the requirements in the zoning bylaw. We've reconfigured Winston Road based on town comments and provided parking in that area based on the design, knowing that that may be an area of parking that is used more for the public in connection with the waterfront trail. We added what we're calling a flex street and to create an additional point of interest and connection between the buildings on the eastern portion of the site, so between the numbers one and six. There's a flex street there that connects down to the waterfront trail that we also see as an opportunity for future community use, future space to close that off and hold events. And then we worked through in detail with staff, with the peer reviewer, on identifying the zoning regulations to ensure that the built form and the massing reflects what's being conveyed through the concepts, that there's a stepped approach, balconies and terraces, and design regulations associated with the buildings so that you get the highest quality buildings. And that zone, those zoning regulations set the framework for the additional detailed design to come. So this gives you an idea of the eco restoration area and how that interacts with Winston Road proposed to the site. There's Winston Road, then a multi-use trail which connects from the service road through the site to the waterfront trail with that eco restoration area adjacent to it. On the draft plan of subdivision, I just wanted to point this out. There was a recommendation, number two. This draft plan of subdivision is updated, and we've provided this to staff to address recommendation number two. So there's no issue with that recommendation as it relates to the plan of subdivision. It really was where that arrow is pointing, modifying the line to be more within the open space than within the park plan due to the top of bank. The staff report and recommendations, there's, you know, a very positive report. Address the regional official plan, the town's official plan, and the provincial policy requirements, and supporting the proposed development. A number of key conclusions as it relates to the proposal on page 13. For example, it talks about town staff being satisfied that the parkland dedication is appropriate. On page 18, it speaks to the density, and the height considerations are also addressed in greater detail later in the report. We're supportive of the recommendations from staff. And I'll turn it over to Fred now in conclusion.
Thank you very much, David. First of all, I'd like to thank our committee chair, councillor Bothwell, as well as Mayor Jordan and members of committee, and planning director, Antonetta Minakino, and all the planning staff that we've had the privilege of working with over the last four years. We're really proud of the plan that we're presenting tonight as it represents a collaborative effort, a collaboration of efforts amongst scores of individuals from a very professional level, whether it's our consultants or the municipalities' peer reviewers, the municipal staff, the members of committee, and the scores and hundreds of members of public that have participated, not just in the various public meetings that we've been a part of, but also, you know, to speak about the fact that this went through a large, you know, municipal planning and visionary process that precluded our submission of application, that had a huge involvement of the general public. And we've done our very best to work with staff to ensure that we are able to carry through that vision and present it to everyone this evening. Los Anni Homes, as many of you know, has a proud 25-year history building in the town of Grimsby. It's been our pleasure to work alongside previous councils and staff members, and I believe that we've always done so very productively. We have never had circumstance to not to go outside of the actual collaborative effort of working with staff and the members of committee. On every project that we've done out there, it's always been that joint vision that's moved us forward. And I believe that Los Anni Homes has contributed gainfully to the benefit of the community. We're very proud of the communities that we've built, and we're proud of our heritage program as well. And as many of you might know, that I'm not just a corporate citizen of the community as a business operator, but also as a citizen and resident of the community. Something that I take a very, very, you know, with great pride. We have a huge obligation and a commitment to the community to pull this project off and ensure that it makes everyone who lives in the community and those that get to see it extremely proud. I could see this property from my backyard, and I, you know, I'm going to be my own biggest critic to ensure that I'm proud of what we build out here. I'm also proud of what Bill mentioned earlier, and that is the work that we've done throughout Southern Ontario, working with small communities, working alongside staff and council members, and especially with the vision that we had moving forward for the recent developments that we've had approved, not least of which was a 1,700-unit development for St. George, which is incredibly important to the mayor of the community. And we're proud that we were able to get that approved very recently. I've had dreams of having this plan brought before this committee. Now, in my dream, we get full support from council members. And I'm still, you know, hopeful that that's the case tonight because it is with the execution of this made in Grimsby solution that we want to be able to move forward. And the work ahead of us is just beginning. And it only begins with your support tonight, which I hope that we would get because this is the best that we believe should happen. The ability to be able to work together towards our solutions and to make sure that we're able to continue to work together to see this plan to its completion is always preferred if we can do it together. And if we had your support, we know we can do that. But I hope you just understand that, as Bill alluded to earlier, that this is just the beginning or the start of the work that we want to continue doing with the community, its staff, council members, and especially the general public. We have a willingness and an ability to ensure that the community continues to participate in both the design vision of the buildings and the waterfront trail. We want this made in Grimsby vision to carry throughout the implementation phase of this plan. We want to make sure that we're able to move this to this conclusion together because we feel that it's the best way to get this project completed. You know, right now, we're involved in presentation of our plan here, you know, from a Zoom perspective, and we appreciate that opportunity. But, you know, we're surrounded by divisiveness, and it's perhaps more prominent now than it ever has been. I don't believe we're ever I don't believe we're ever going to be able to build a better community if we're not working together and I I just commit ourselves. Ensuring that we'll be able to do something everyone's proud of. And we we commit ourselves to want to continue to work with this community to see this project to its completion. And so. In closing, I simply want to say that. I'm proud of who we are as a company. I know we can do good in this community. We need your support in order to be able to move this application forward. So that we can continue to work with the community to see it to become something that we're proud of. So I encourage your support and we appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Fred. Dave and Bill. And. We're just going to receive this now and then we'll do, we'll answer questions after planning. Does their report as well. We need a mover and seconder. Moved by councillor Cadwell, seconded by councillor Ritchie. Moved by councillor Cadwell, seconded by councillor Ritchie, result of the delegation from Dave Ashkin, Fred Losant. Lanny and William Liskey be received. Councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Frake?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councillor Sharp?
Yes.
Councillor Vane?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes, that's received, that's carried. Next, we have 10.1. Councillor Ritchie? Councillor Vane?
Yes.
We're getting back. Pardon me? Yeah. Just have to. We have report 10.2, report PA 20-19, official plan and zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan subdivision. Application 362 and 398 North Service Road. Antonetta?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we have Paul Lowes from SGL who prepared the report, who will be speaking to the matter. He's already. On the line and ready to go.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of committee of the whole. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. As Antonetta said, we've been retained to peer review this application and been working with. Town staff for the last year or so to review and. Discuss it with the applicants, discuss with staff and try and resolve a number of issues. I just want to do a very brief presentation to cover off our report, not to repeat anything. That Mr. Aston talked about, but try and be brief and go over it. How do I move it forward, clerk? I'm pressing the buttons?
You have full control, Paul.
I'm using my up and down key and it's not moving.
Can you click on it using your mouse?
Oh. Now I just went through about four pages. Sorry. Thank you. The subject site is, we've heard, was previously the Fifthville Truck Stop. Surrounding land uses are Lake Ontario to the north. There is a single detached home to the east as long as well as the region's water treatment plant. Both of those, the house and the. Treatment plant are owned by the region. QW to the south and public parkland to the west. The important feature here, which I'll discuss. Is that there are no existing residential lanes abutting the property. The applicant seeks, as we've heard, to develop it for a mixed use development comprising apartments, townhouses. Employment generating uses restaurants. With a significant public park component along the waterfront. As as was mentioned previously by Mr. Aston. The design of the buildings is is not before committee tonight. That will be subject to a future site plan. Process once before the committee is zoning and the draft plan and official plan amendment. But I want to get into the zoning about how we've been very careful to ensure that. The general concept is realized through the zoning is because it's quite a significant site, a significantly large site. There's two parts to the official plan amendment that were requested. One is to reduce the employment overlay zone that is located on the north side of North Service Road. And approximately reduce that by half. So that the employment overlay is predominantly on the eastern side of the subject site adjacent to North Service Road. The other is to increase the maximum permitted height. That's currently at 12 stories and increase that to a range from 12 to 22 stories. I should note that there's no increase in overall density. They meet the maximum density. And don't exceed the maximum density in the official plan. Well, that, if you're seeing the same as I have, it looks like the plans got rather moved around on the PowerPoint. This is the draft plan and subdivision. Basically blocks one to four are the. Are the residential and commercial employment areas with block four being the predominant location for the employment generating uses. Blocks five to nine are the open space and stream quarter blocks that Mr. Aston talked about. Open space buffer along the lake to be the top of bank and the setback from the top of bank and then along the stream quarter. And then we have open space parkland box. For for the public parkland dedication, both the open space and the parkland will be dedicated to the municipality. And then there's a small block 11 of the road widening. We noted on the draft plan area block five. That extended into the stream quarter needed to be combined with block nine and Mr. Aston just talked about in his previous. Presentation that they will do that, which is great. There's two other areas of land that need to be purchased from the town. One are lands that are. That will be combined with blocks one and two to. To be part of their development. And another part that is town park. Town property that's the park that needs to be purchased and then dedicated to the municipality for the realigned Winston Road. And I apologize that. If you're seeing the same presentation that I am, that looks like the draft lines got shifted in the in the red lines have got moved, but you won't see it in. In our report properly. So I want to touch on a few of the key issues and one of those is building heights. And I'm sure the members of the public are why are we changing the official plan when the official plan permits 12 stories? This official plan was from the Winston Road secondary plan where we developed that plan for the municipality. And at the time, we felt that 12 stories was appropriate. This is before there was any announcement of a future ghost station nearby. So what's changed is we have a ghost station and Mr. Aston talked about it within. We're within a major transit station area within that distance. It's appropriate to look for higher heights. We looked at what's the impact of having taller buildings? And there, as I mentioned, there is no residential nearby. There would be no impact on nearby residents. There's no shadowing issue. So when we look at accommodating heights, we also have to look at the impact on the site itself. So how are those heights accommodated? So we looked at how to accommodate towers with sitting on podiums. In other words. There's a base building, then the towers are set back from that and we've implemented that into the zoning bylaw. We've also looked at separation from the tallest towers, those are 12 stories and above. We've looked at 25 meter separation between those towers. The base building, the lower parts, the lower mid-rise components with 15 meter separation. So that's a good separation. Privacy for those people living in the towers and also openness. It reduces wind effects, reduces shadowing on the site when you have those smaller towers and separated. By the separation. And you'll see that in the zoning schedule. Other issue touched on in earlier presentations, parking compared to what was earlier. Originally proposed, they meet the parking, the zoning bylaw requirements for parking. The majority of that is underground. There will be parking along the North Service Road. There's a future site planned to just show how that would be accommodated. But in our opinion, that is appropriate to help support those employment generating uses along North Service Road. We also have public access to the waterfront, which is a great asset with this development. We've bought 45 meter view quarters, as was mentioned, along that stream or the north south stream quarter. We've which which meets the fish plan policies. We've a new public road that goes through the site that will provide access to the parkland. And an extension of the waterfront trail along the waterfront were great, quite an asset for the municipality along the waterfront. The parkland element, it is, the policy is required a minimum 30 meter along the waterfront and meets that requirement. There is 30 meter setback from the top of bank. Combination of the open space and the parkland dedication is a significant amount of open space along the waterfront. Employment overlay was another key issue of whether we could support reducing the employment overlay by half. We looked at the other example when we did an amendment for the employment overlay and that was on Aqua Zoo and Aqua Blue sites. A couple of years ago where we agreed to reduce the employment overlay for having one building in one part of the site. We looked at the same amount of floor area of employment that was created through that development. Compared to the site and we made sure that a similar amount of employment per land area was provided for on this development. So we're quite satisfied that although it's reduced in size, the same amount of employment we're looking for is achieved. With a minimum of 7,000 square meters overall on the site, 6,500 square meters on the eastern part in that employment overlay zone. So we're satisfied that it meets the intent of the official plan. In terms of the zoning bylaw, there's a requirement to. We revised the existing zoning from a neighborhood development, private open space to mixed use identity, public open space. Provides for 7,000 square meters employment generating uses as required, no reduction in parking. And I mentioned, which is what are you very unique for the town of Grimsby is the bylaw that we created. And Mr. Aston talked about this. And in terms of assuring the built form in the concept plan is created to very large site. Three FSI across this way, three times coverage is density across this site is a fair amount of density. And we spent a lot of time on what's the appropriate location of that built form amassing. And so what this bylaw does is not dictate the look and feel of those buildings, but dictates the building envelopes. With some flexibility, the step backs, the heights, and so you'll see here. Every building has a certain height, different parts of the building have a certain height. The the podiums are identified, the podium heights are identified, the stack backs close to the waterfront are identified. So that concept and built form. Is all set out very specifically in the zoning bylaw. And as Mr. Ashton said, and I agree, that provides the framework for the detailed design that falls in the in the site plan approval process. This is just the other half of the site showing the built form envelopes in the zoning bylaw. So as as you see in the staff report, there was five recommendations. The first recommendation is what Mr. Aston talked about and I talked about was. Revising the draft plan of subdivision so that the stream quarter is wholly. Outside of the park block and wholly within the the open space block. Two, that the developer purchase the land from the town to facilitate the real alignment of the right away. And dedicate those lands within the proposed public road to the town. And and purchase the lands forming the old Winston Road right away to combine with blocks one and two for their development. Two, that the official plan amendment is attached to our staff report be approved. Oh, sorry, three, four, that the proposed zoning bylaw be approved in principle. Subject to one and two, now similarly number two being being addressed. And five, that the draft plan of subdivision be approved subject to draft plan conditions. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions that committee whole may have and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Paul. We just need a mover and seconder to get this on the floor for discussion and questions. Mover and a seconder councillor Frake. And a seconder. Councillor Dunstall? Questions councillor Frake, questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all the presenters, Mr. Lozani and his team and for Mr. Lowes for their input. When I look at this project, it's it's kind of overwhelming. It's probably going to be the biggest, if it gets passed. Project that ever happened in Grimsby. And and I applaud Mr. Lozani for his his dream and I. And and but at the same time, I can't help but look at this project and feel like we're trying to put. A gallon into a quart. Because there's there's, and I'm quite concerned about the traffic and quite concerned about the parking, amount of parking we that's always been an issue down there. There's so many things that I still can't get my head around. And I'm sure we'll get into more discussion. But traffic is big issue for me. The height is still an issue for me. The parking is definitely an issue. But, you know. Hopefully we'll come to some kind of meeting of the minds because as it stands right now, I just can't see this happening. But anyways, we'll see what the rest of the folks have to say. Thank you.
Councillor Vane's up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of in agreement or very much in agreement with what just councillor Frake just said. We just recently approved the development for another developer in which we sought and got more parking spaces. I am concerned that. I know initially when this was first proposed, the buildings were very close. People were concerned about views and that. I'm not as concerned about that. I believe it's a. It's a good use of the space, but I do believe there's some things that still have to be worked out. I, as councillor Frake stated, parking is definitely a big issue. There's also going to be the employment lands where I'm sure you're going to have restaurants, which was again a big issue in our last development. The traffic, I'm going to defer to Public Works on this one, but I am very concerned that that roadway. You talk about an alignment. I'd like to know a little bit more about the alignment, but the. I'm concerned with putting that amount of traffic on that roadway as it currently exists. It's a very curvy road. It's got. Relatively high speed. Oftentimes people go up and down that road because there's not a lot to deter them from speeding. And I'm concerned that with public access and stuff that we're going to have more children in the area and stuff like that. So. The one question I would ask is what exactly do you mean by realignment? What exactly is your plan? Are you going to be straightening that road a bit? And you talked a lot about having underground parking and mentioned there was something like 50 spots. For the public use and whatever, but unfortunately, what we found in the past is that, and this was also raised recently, is that. A lot of local residents in the buildings may not, may have extra cars. I know in the development I live in. We have two parking spaces designated to everybody and we have some people with three or four cars. And I know you talk about being close to the Grimsby, the ghost station. And I respect that and think it's great. But I do have, I do share the concerns that councillor Frake raised and I would like to know a little clarification on the realignment of the road, please. And if there's going to be an expansion of the road itself. It's currently only two lanes, one each way. So if somebody could answer that question, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Vane. Are we going to take all the questions at the end? Was that the way we were planning this? I'm just not 100% sure. If we are, then councillor Sharp?
So I I think it's best if we answer the questions as we ask them. I think that's the way that we had agreed to it. Could you answer councillor Vane's questions? Could you answer Councilor Vane's questions?
Antonetta?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to ask Dave or Paul to answer those questions, one or both. So whoever wants to answer Councilor's questions, Paul is putting his hand up, so we'll pass it over to Paul.
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor. The North Service Road won't be realigned. What is being realigned is the municipality has this old stub, old Winston Road stub. Those are the lands that have to be purchased. What is, what is the advocates proposing to do is realign that entrance to that old stub, continue it through the site and back to North Service Road, creating a U-shaped crescent to access the site. All the traffic access into the site and out of the site will be on that road. So those two access points will be from providing access. So the, which, which will provide the no backup on the North Service Road. North Service Road will continue to flow. Both NTO and in your staff have looked at it and are satisfied with the traffic. Although there are some conditions and they've asked for an updated traffic study with the final, final plan to just confirm that the traffic works and the intersection spacing works and the intersection works with interchange. So there's more study to be done to confirm that for NTO and the staff, but they're prepared to move forward at this point with those conditions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I still have reservations, but I'll wait and listen to the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sharp. You're up next.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I have a couple of questions. So first, a comment about that Winston Road realignment they're talking about. For the people that are listening, we're talking about the entrance to the fifth wheel. When the fifth wheel used to be there, there was a little entrance right as you came, like turn right on Casablanca onto the service road, that entrance that brought into the actual fifth wheel restaurant area, that was Winston Road. And they're going to extend that into the property, like past two or three of the first buildings. And then it'll make a right-hand turn and it'll come back out to the service road. The service road kind of bends and it comes out after the bend further east. So, I mean, I'm well aware of this property. I actually used to work at the fifth wheel when I was in high school. I actually worked at the Blue Beacon. It was the truck wash on the fifth wheel parking lot. So I know the site well and I know they talk about this eco passage. It was just a ditch back then beside the truck wash. But I'm quite aware of this, of this area, including the beach, because my parents, my dad lived over at Roberts Road North, which is on the other side of the water treatment plant. And so we could walk along to get in. There's a beach there below the fifth wheel, which I guess if you look even further back, that was originally the Casablanca, which was a hotel and had like a, some kind of a banquet center and a theater or something there. I don't know the details, but it was, it was a spot on the map where people could stop in Grimsby. Anyhow, all that aside, because we could talk about that if we brought in the historical society and people from the museum. I'm on the museum board and we know a lot about that site. But the thing I want to talk about more is the commercial space. And what I actually want to ask is, how much residential space in square meters is on the site? And then how much, it sounds like 7,000 square meters of commercial. And so if staff can answer that, and I have a few other questions, but can someone answer me?
Through, through, through Chair Jordan, please, if you don't mind. Thanks for your questions, Councilor.
Certainly.
You know, I know that the discussion on traffic, I just remind that questions related to traffic previously had to do with satisfaction of a, of a detailed report, which we've submitted and have been asked to recalculate certain items on it, but we've been able to satisfy the consultants on that and town staff as well. However, we have to continue to work in that direction to make sure that we meet all the requirements for traffic, which we feel we've done, but we would know that we will continue to do so. As was stated earlier, the parking is the same thing. We contend on ensuring that we meet the municipal requirements for parking. We have not asked for a reduction. And the amount of parking that we are, that we are providing is, is greater than it is for developments in neighboring communities. And we feel it is sufficient as well. We were, at the end of the day, we felt, why not? I mean, the more parking is better. And in this instance, we've agreed with the town to go with the parking requirements they require. As it relates to the, to the residential relative to the, to the, to the commercial, I hope everyone understands that Lozani Homes has a commercial industrial development division. And we've done a lot of work along the QEW in that office environment. And when we see this large development, we want to make sure that we have a balanced amount of employment lands that we can, that we can, you know, bring to, to the approvals. We had to stretch ourselves significantly to agree to that 75,000 square foot number. We felt that it was going to be very difficult for us to be able to achieve success in that amount. We pointed to a number of developments along the QEW, not least of which is the DeSantis development over at Aqua Zul, which to date still has not leased out one square foot of space to a third party. We are further concerned with the changes that have happened through COVID and how the new, how new space is going to be absorbed by, by new building operations going forward. We went so far, quite frankly, to have Urban Metrics, a consulting firm out of Mississauga, that did provide a very substantial report to the municipal, to staff. They basically identified that it would be very difficult for them to be able to confirm that there would be market support for more than 45,000 square feet. However, in this compromise that we find ourselves in to get to a position where we agree with the requirements of staff, we have agreed to, to build that space. So, and so it's not really a question of relative space of residential to commercial. It's what can the commercial market really absorb in that location? And we have provided the consultant reports suggesting that 75 is too much. We have, however, in an effort to get a, you know, a consensus between staff and ourselves, agreed to do the 75,000.
Thanks, Fred. And through Mayor Jordan, to our planning staff, what's the size of the residential component in the building?
Paul, we're looking, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, we're looking, Walter and I are looking to take these questions.
Apparently, I don't have my, I don't have my calculator in front of me to calculate all the buildings. I don't know if Dave Aston has a quick number on it. I would have to get back to it.
What's the GFI? What's the total area of the building? Like this is a reasonable question and.
No, it's, it's all in, it's all in the report. It's just down by building by block by block and I'd have to add it. I don't have my calculator in front of me.
Yeah, so I believe it's 900,000. I'm not sure if that is net of the commercial or not.
Around 900,000 square meters or square feet?
Square feet.
Square feet. So that's divided by 10, that's roughly 90,000 square meters. And 7,000, so you've got somewhere around 8% commercial space in the building? Do we, do we know that answer?
That'd be, that'd be approximately right based on those numbers, yes.
So to the planning staff or Paulos, what does a mixed use development require for the mix of commercial and residential space?
The official plan doesn't set a minimum requirement for mixed use space. It's the employment overlay that requires a employment generating uses to be provided in that area. There's no specific minimum on that, except that the employment area, employment overlay area is supposed to provide employment generating uses. That's why we looked at what was done on Aqua Zul and Aqua Blue as an example and came up with this number and it's exact same proportion as in those in that development.
So in the, in the past, and maybe this question would be best answered by Mr. Basic if he's here. I remember the number 30%, and I think that was, we were talking medium density mixed use. Walter, do you know what I, what I'm recalling with regards to 30% commercial space?
I can answer that as well because I was the one who wrote those policies.
For long, Mr. Lowe's.
So 30% was the, was the original policies for the area along the highway. And it was 30% of the land area. We revised that a number of years ago when we updated the secondary plan to provide this, this overlay and, and provided a policy on the overlay.
What was it revised to?
Showing that, showing the employment overlay on the schedule. And then that, that area is supposed to provide for the employment generating uses. But there was no proportion over the entire site. And the policy is allowed to do a comprehensive master plan of the property to show you how you can provide for the employment generating uses. And that's what the applicant has done, has done the comprehensive master plan.
Okay, so I also wanted to ask about, we were talking about traffic and I talked about that, the old entrance to the fifth wheel. And it's kind of right as you turn right, it's almost a continuation of, of the road straight into what used to be the parking lot. But there'll be people turning left into there. And I presume most of the residents are going to be coming from Casablanca. And, and there'll be a lot of left-hand turns into there. How is that going to affect traffic, especially with, there's kind of an S-bend that comes when people are heading west from like Kermin Avenue, Olive Street kind of area, when they're heading west towards Casablanca. And then there'll be people heading east from Casablanca, but turning left into the first entrance. And then again, into the second entrance on that S-bend. How is that, what's, is, do we have Public Works staff with us?
Brandon's on, Dave.
So my question is, how is that left-hand turn traffic going to interact with the westbound traffic? And then if this becomes a significant amount of westbound traffic, where is that traffic going to queue while they wait to get in with the left-hand turn?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, all of those details will be reviewed as part of the detailed traffic review, the study. Again, as Mr. Lozani had mentioned, that they have submitted a traffic study. We are, we have reviewed that and there's some comments in there that still need to be addressed. But all of those items will be reviewed as part of that, that review.
So what I'm expected to make a decision now without that information. So I'm telling you that in five years, when a resident calls me, or in 10 years, when they call me to complain about some issue to do with the parking, and they're going to say, why didn't you, whatever, why didn't you do something about this? And my answer is going to be that, I don't, I don't know. I just approved it. They were going to deal with it later. And it hasn't been dealt with yet. And so we're at the approval stage right now. And I think that that information be prudent. It's not available though, so I accept that. I think that's all the questions I have right now. I'll wait for my colleagues if they have any.
Councilor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And again, I appreciate the, the work that's gone into bringing forward this development and the refinements that Mr. Lozani and his team have done in the presentation tonight and their community involvement and trying to find out what our community really wants as they move forward doing this development. I just have a few, can, just a few questions and concerns that still sort of bother me that I'm going to bring forward and ask for some clarification. So the first one being that there's references in the SGL report to section 37 agreement. And as we know, that our official plan does provide for bonusing in the sense of either height or density, where it's been increased from what's in our official plan of 12 stories. And the, we have an implementation guide as to how that section 37 is to be implemented. And part of it is our community involvement, up to 10 members. They meet prior or at the open house or the statutory public meeting. There's a whole process on how that's supposed to occur so that we don't have an alderman or a planning staff member determining what the community benefits should be for the community that is affected. As we had with LJM where there was a $200,000 random amount that was selected and then for the Odyssey was 100. At that time, I brought forward that we didn't have a framework, which many other municipalities did have, on how to determine those section 37 benefits. And as we know, the province has, has delayed the CBC, the Community Benefits Charges and the Development Charges review, where some of these things may have been impacted and that's a two-year transition period. So as it stands, our section 37 benefits for bonusing in our official plan is relevant to this development and should be considered and hasn't been considered and is to be considered according to, and included in the zoning by law amendment and agreed to through that process. So what I see here is a significant gap and that that process hasn't been started at all. And we don't have any discussion as to what the community is looking for in respect to what may be agreed to with the significant number of buildings that are exceeding the 12-story height. So I'm going to leave that, that, that's an area that I'm feeling, we can't address it tonight. I'm not comfortable with it because it's not in there at all. It does need to be addressed. So that to me is a bit of a gap. I did read in the previous reports that the parking is, if we look at how the rationale was arrived at, again, it's, it's a variant of shared mixed use combination formulas. But ultimately it boils down to, and this is where I need clarification, it does appear to be one, one parking space per unit, .25 for visitors. And that one unit, what I understood in the previous reports, that it was, it's unbundled, meaning that the paradigm report that was supporting this development suggested that they would be sold and not attached to the units. I'm kind of concerned if unbundling those parking is still on the table because the potential is somebody buys a unit today, doesn't want a space and then sells their unit and the next person doesn't have one unless there's one available to purchase. So it just, I just have a concern about looking at unbundling. The other thing I have a concern about is with respect to parking, that currently we have nine spaces, I believe, along the old Winston stub. And then we just extended it into the, the road allowance by about another 12 or so. So by doing the realignment, we're going to lose those spaces. And from the site plan, what I can see is that we're, we're only going to gather about nine spaces that are going to be lay-by, close to the existing ones that we have now. And the remaining 40 or so are going to be along the Winston, the Winston Road along the lakefront as lay-by. Concern I have with that is that we're giving up a significant amount of spaces there that are close to the Casablanca beach. We're selling .98 hectares of road allowance. And I don't even know how we're selling it because I haven't seen anything on the process of how we're going to negotiate the value, which we did with the Concord place with Aqua Blue. We, we had a negotiated amount. I don't see anything on that negotiated amount for that significant portion of road allowance. So I think we're missing something there. And then I think that, and, and we're taking a piece of our own parkland, point 013 hectares of the existing park. So .93 hectares is the Winston Road allowance, .013 hectares is the additional parkland. So just have a concern, we don't have a process to do that, negotiate the value of that and the loss of those parking spaces. And my feeling is that that's a, that's a significant portion that's being sold or realigned into the development. And we're, we're not getting the proximity of the spaces that I think we need close to that beach area. The other thing, the roadside, the Winston Road parking, as we've seen with Place Paul and Ace, on both sides of the street, the potential is those townhouses that have the million dollar view are going to say, I don't want to see cars parked in front of my townhouse on, on the one side and lobby to have only one side of parking. Irregardless if we stay with the two sides, nothing on the site plan shows fire hydrants for those townhomes or accessible parking, which we know is required along Winston Road. So we're going to lose significant number of those 40 parking spaces. So we're going to lose significant number of those 40 parking spaces due to fire restrictions and accessible parking needs along the park. So I have a concern that, you know, overall, the town may not see the benefit of a significant increase or easy access for the public to have the spaces that we know we need for the beach. So those are my concerns and I understand in the report as well that it's all shared parking. So we're in the same situation where if we don't have, you know, hopefully we can look at getting the dedicated parking for the commercial and retail and restaurant that's above ground and not have it as shared. I think we just really, really need to look at trying to retain some safe spaces because it's going to be extremely difficult for condo boards in that area as well to manage and enforce parking restrictions. The, a little disappointed that the traffic impact study, again, MTO is requesting some queuing, light, the light change and stuff, standards as to how that's going to impact. So I do think that as Counselor Sharp mentioned, that understanding the impacts of the ins and outs of that development and the impact of the volume of traffic is kind of important to our decision. The parkland, this is a question about the hazard overlay because as you can see, the hazard overlay is pretty well over the whole site. I didn't see anything in the zoning bylaw amendment requesting a reduction in the hazard overlay. And I think we've had to do that in the past. So I just want to clarify that the applicant is asking for reduction in the hazard overlay in order to, you can't build in something that's in hazard overlay. And that the 30 meters promenade area is, there's, there seems to be some conflicting information in the reports where MPCA says it's 30 meters from the top of bank, stable top of bank. And the region said, no, 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 you just have to measure it from the waterline. So it looks like the measurements of the 30 meter setback is from the waterline, which is a significant shortfall on that area there as well. So just got to clarify where that 30 meters was actually measured from. And some of the areas, when we look at the dedicated promenade area, it looks like it's only 15 meters in some areas and 16 in others. I know that they wanted to have it kind of undulating and a little bit, so it wasn't all 30 meters. But just overall, the parkland dedication is .896 hectares. And our official plan provides for one hectare per 300 units or 5% of the of the developable land, basically. And I'm just, I'm thinking that one hectare per 300 units is three, is three hectares of the seven point some odd hectares. And I'm just wondering if one hectare of parkland is satisfactory to the town when there is an opportunity to ask for further, either in cash or if we're not going to get more green space. So I'm just wondering if we're getting the full benefit of our parkland provisions within the official plan? And if the promenade is actually going to be the width that is the most beneficial to the town in order to put the five meter boardwalk on it as well? The, I'm almost done. The waterfront trail ends at the east end of the property. And Rec Services, the Director of Parks and Rec mentioned, which was that it would be nice to see that curve around the east side of the property and join up to the North Service Road because we're not expecting that the region's going to allow us to go over the water treatment plant property and extend the waterfront trail that way. So to me, it makes sense that the the five meter waterfront, the five meter trail actually continue curve around the development and come up on the east side. There's only 15 feet, I believe, on the lot boundary on the east side. So I don't see how that can be accomplished. I just am a little, I'd like to see if there's any possibility to extend the stub and not have people have to go back and through the development to get out. And actually that they can connect to the North Service Road on the east side of the property. The other question I have is phasing. There was some, some talk about it being phased. I don't see anything in official plan of the ZBA about how that phasing is supposed to be agreed to. I would suggest that if we're looking at phasing, that the park and the trail be phase one and there'd be holding provisions that those be provided first. And then, of course, some of the commercial would be my second for phasing, a building that would have a commercial component in it. So there is a few numbers that don't agree on the site plan. I won't get into the detail, but there, there's a little bit of conflict and I can go over that later. 100 meters here, 100 meters there that are differing in a couple places. So it just raises the question whether the numbers are all lining up correctly. And we're going to have a little bit of shadow on the townhouses. I know the shadow is something that we're not going to be able to do much about because, but it is going to impact the townhomes at the front of the development. So those are my questions and some of my concerns. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Bothwell, for those questions. We do have answers for them. So what I think we'd like to do is start with your first question, which was with respect to Section 37. Mr. Loz, if I'm not mistaken, you created that report for the town a few years ago. Can you take us through that and answer Counselor Bothwell's questions on that matter?
Certainly. So the Section 37, as we changed it, required first that council be satisfied with the merits of the application before entering into any discussions on Section 37. So with this being an official plan amendment, it's very important that council is satisfied on the official plan amendment first and then proceed through Section 37 discussions with the applicant. As we said, do not approve the zoning bylaw tonight, but rather hold that approval until other matters addressed. And Section 37, we should have mentioned that as the other one. Section 37 is addressed. So that's still to, still to come. But first, this council, meanwhile, and council has to be satisfied with the merits of the application.
Counselor Bothwell, is that helpful for your first question on Section 37?
It is, but I think what what's missing is that the process hasn't even started and a working group was supposed to be formed to discuss it. And I can go through the whole information, implementation guide. But it was supposed to, the working group will commence its evaluation of the applicant's community benefits after the first open house. And we're way past that. We're at the report approval. So I think that I can't see this moving forward without having those discussions and having that agreement in place and re reviewing this with the ZBA with it in it.
Certainly, the ZBA will have to address it when it's finalized. And there will have to be that process to achieve what the Section 37 should be.
Thank you.
All right, the other questions? Just going to.
Yeah.
All right.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have the questions about the unbundling of the parking and sort of missing information on the parking study. If we could ask the applicant to address those, please.
Sure. Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just the parking requirements, the way the bylaw is working with the town. It looks at the AM and PM and the peak parking rates and the different types of uses. And that's what's established in the zoning bylaw and that's what we use to identify the parking requirements. As far as the, the analysis of the bundling and unbundling, that will really be determined at a future plan of condominium process, should that proceed. And the approach to determining how the parking will occur. It could occur in various forms with it being bundling for some of the buildings or unbundled for buildings as well. So I think we'll, we'll work through that process and consideration through the plan of condominium approach. As far as just a couple others, what I have, just to clarify some of the other questions that I had while I'm unmuted. The parking along Winston Road in the park. Winston Road will ultimately be dedicated to the town. We'll work with town staff on the design of Winston Road as we work through the detailed design processes required by the conditions of approval. There's nothing to suggest that through that detailed design process, we couldn't look at adding additional space through, you know, changing the layby to perpendicular spaces to increase if that's something that the town would like to see, increase parking along the the waterfront area. With regard to Winston Road and the intersection, the paradigm transportation study, they identified 25 meter queue lengths for left turn lanes into Winston Road and at both the realigned Winston Road and the new access to Winston Road at the service road. So that is something already built into the recommendations. And again, at the time of registering or moving through the detailed design associated with the roads, that will be updated with the most current traffic information and the traffic forecast to ensure that that is the correct queue length at the time. And then work on what the detailed design will be for those intersections to ensure that that queue length is accommodated. Just on the quick, on the hazard overlay, there's no development proposed in the hazard overlay. That's identified within the zoning bylaw. And the setback is taken from the top of bank that was the agreed to top of bank with the Conservation Authority. And that was identified in their comments. Just a couple there, quick on the parkland in the report. Staff support the parkland as being proposed as dedicated in both the dedication and additional cash and levers may be required. With the location of the trail, we did have this discussion with staff as far as locating along the east side between the treatment facility or the water facility and the proposed building. What, what in fact we concluded is that to identify or to locate a trail between the building and a chain link fence with minimal opportunities for kind of a movement off the trail actually would be SEPTED issue. And that it would be safer to have the trail enter into the site with the right signage, putting signage at the restoration area where there's the access to the Winston Road to the service road, identifying that the trail will end at the, where I called it a flex street with the access through the proposed development to the waterfront or to the trail. There's another point of access which we've been looking at as providing that as a public opportunity to walk through the site. And then at the end of the trail, it would essentially end in, in I guess, a cul-de-sac designed to end in a cul-de-sac where there would be enough space and area that would provide for safety considerations and as well future expansion design considerations.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Mr. Aston, if I could just jump in in case all of council doesn't know what SEPTED is. I just wanted to clarify that acronym.
Thank you.
It's Crime Prevention Through Design. So in case you were wondering what Mr. Aston was referring to, that's what that is.
And then just on the last point, and then I'll let Mr. Loz finish off with regard to phasing. Currently, the phasing is intended from the west to the east. So the Winston Road and North Service Road, like the existing Winston Road entrance. And that's where the restaurant is proposed in that phase one. And then it would move in the east or the direction across the site.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chair, if we could, I'm trying to go through all the questions so we get answers for all of council. And you've covered off quite a few of them, Mr. Aston, so thank you. But there was also, we'll go in order. The next question was amount for the town owned property and the process related to that. So we're just going to have Walter go through what is related to that.
Thank you. Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I'm getting some feedback here, but thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. We have a clearly defined road closure policy. These are unopened road allowances or what used to be unopened road allowances. We still need to determine the status, whether it's still an open or unopened road allowance. But anyway, regardless of that, we would be required to follow the procedure that we've set out in terms of the disposition of surplus lands within the municipality, which requires, in the case of a road allowance, we would need to pass a bylaw to close the road allowance. But in advance of that, we would need to declare it surplus. And prior to the sale of the property, we would be required to get an appraisal prepared by an independent appraiser. And that's the value that would be determined or established in order for the applicant to acquire the land. There was a question about the amount of parking that's being proposed. Currently, we've tried to fit as many parking spaces as possible within the existing right of way that we own in that area in order to accommodate the unusual demands that we've experienced over, over the summer. And a lot of, a lot of the demands was generated, and it was generated by visitors from outside of the municipality. The town will have to determine what the appropriate amount of parking is for that particular portion of the park. But what's being proposed in conjunction with this application is 51 parking spaces along the right of way in the vicinity of that, of that site. I believe you mentioned that, also in regards to the parking and the location of the proposed restaurant in that immediate area. That's something that we'll have to look at in more detail and how guests of the restaurant facility will be visiting the site, where they will be coming from, where they will be parking, will they be expected to park within the, within the underground parking, will there be space available there? Will they be asked to park in the parking spaces that are adjacent to the service road? These are the kinds of details that will work out more specifically in the site plan review process. However, just, just you should note that with regard to the residents, the future residents of this complex, it's anticipated that the residents of the complex will not add to the parking requirements external to the site as we anticipate that the residents within the complex will actually walk to wherever they want to go, either to the park or to the promenade or to the restaurant or any other employment uses that might be in the heated area. So we don't, we don't anticipate that the residents of the site will add to the parking demand. It will be essentially people that use the facility that are outside of the immediate area.
Okay, and then the next question was with respect to the 30 meter promenade and some discrepancies in that measurement, whether it was top of bank or whether it was something different, Counselor Bothwell. So we will also answer that question and Walter will do that for us.
Thank you, Antonetta. Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. The 30 meter setback is from the top of bank. And that is a building setback requirement. So if you notice, none of the buildings are proposed within that setback requirement. And that was a requirement of the Conservation Authority. And that's from the stable top of bank. The amount of parkland, that was the other question, I'll just, it's kind of spills over into that area. But the amount of parkland that's being proposed is acceptable to our Parks Department, who reviewed the proposed plan over, over several years. And with the, also the aid of some consultants that were hired to do a more detailed analysis of park needs within the area. Now, whatever parkland is taken, and that's, those are just the blocks that are identified as park blocks. And they wouldn't include the hazard areas that are identified or the open space areas. Although the open space areas could potentially be used as parkland. uh they won't be calculated towards the parkland minimum requirement. Now, parkland is uh required to be dedicated at a rate of one hectare per three hundred dwelling units for high-density uses. However, uh whatever we don't take in land, um we have the ability to to take cash in lieu of. So the additional cash that would be taken um in lieu of the land that's not taken for to achieve the total amount that uh that we could take would be used pri- in the immediate area uh primarily to outfit the parks. So whatever services or facilities we uh feel are necessary to provide to the citizens of Grimsby and to the area, uh that cash would be used uh to facilitate the provision of those facilities and services on the parks in the immediate area. Uh and that's something coincidentally that we're we're working on uh right now. Uh we're working on a detailed landscape plan uh that if this is the site is approved, uh that we will also coordinate with this particular site also. Um I think that that answers that question, yeah.
And then according to what we have, the last question was sort of about phasing and employment, but I believe Mr. Aston already answered that. So unless Paul, uh Mr. Lowe's, if there's anything else you want to provide, um I believe we've answered everything, but if you need more details or you want more information, Council Bothwell or any other councillor, please do let us know and we can provide you the background or more information to give you absolute clarity in what you're looking for. Thank you.
Antonetta, you broke up at the beginning when you started speaking there. Could you repeat the first part of what you said, please?
This is a test.
I see that answer. Oh, she's there. I just want to say thank you very much, everybody for responding.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My computer went muted and I couldn't hear anybody. So if there was anything I missed, please let me know and happy to coordinate the answer to that. I saw the things lips moving, but I didn't hear anything.
I I think we're okay now. Um, Council Bothwell, did that satisfy all your questions? I just want to make absolutely sure.
It did. I appreciate it uh very much. Thank you.
Council of Barty's up next.
Thank you. Um. I guess I have a a few comments um from Mr. Lozani. Like first, I want to say how much I appreciate that he wants to have a collaborative uh collaborative approach uh to to how we move forward. And you know, I believe he's really sincere in wanting to be a part of this community. Uh community of Grimsby and helping to build Grimsby. And I I think that's a really great thing. Um, so I find that I find that very promising. And once again, and you've probably heard me talk about um the downtown DeSantis development. Again, you know, we have an opportunity, you know, to build something spectacular. And when I'm talking like spectacular, I mean, when when something gets built, we can't change it. So we only we only have one shot to to get it right. And I think the waterfront should be for all of Grimsby, uh for all residents of Grimsby. And it and my personal opinion is it should be more than just a uh a waterfront trail. You know, I I think that we we have a lot more to offer. When I when I think about communities and and even big towns, you know, um that have waterfront, I mean, the first place that comes to my mind is San Sebastian or Santander where where you have, you know, you've got a reasonable scale at the waterfront. And you've got all kinds of public services um at that waterfront and things that bring vibrancy, you know, such as cafes and restaurants and um other kinds of services. I I really believe that's that's where they belong. And if we just put up residences, I mean, that that takes away from what should be available to all of Grimsby and and not just the few that can afford the couple million for the condo. So so that's that's something that that I think is is really important. Um and I and I'm not seeing this here yet. Um when I look at the the scale of the buildings, uh like Counselor um Frank said, I mean, it's twenty-two stories. It's just overwhelming. And when I when I see, when I see the picture of this, you know, I I think that comes in my mind is meet George Jetson. Uh be because it's just kind of otherworldly. The scale of it is so big. And you know, I'm here to represent the the residents of Grimsby. And they they want to keep the small-town feel. And when you put up a twenty-two-story tower, um you're immediately going into Mississauga, um Oakville, downtown Toronto. And it's not it's not the vision that this committee community sees for itself. And um so I I think that's really important, that somehow we need to scale this back to make it a little more human and a little more all-of-Grimbsby friendly. Um certainly, as some of my other colleagues have said, uh there's there's issues with traffic, issues with parking, um all that that have to be worked out. Um and I I hope we can uh do that uh together. Thanks.
Thank you, Council of Barty. Uh Council Dunstall?
Uh thank you, Your Worship. Um, yeah, I I guess I'm gonna speak with a slightly different tone. I I I see those lands that have now been owned by uh Mr. Lozani for, I'm gonna say five years. Uh and it's this month, five years ago, he took possession of the properties that used to be the Fifth Wheel. And as he knows and everybody else knows, I used to live on the site when I managed the Fifth Wheel. So I know the I know the location very well and I know the entrance very well. And I used to live on to Winston Road. Uh that was the address. And yes, the entrance was Winston Road and the Fifth Wheel never owned that little piece of of the road. Uh but I I don't recall any traffic issues. And there was one heck of a lot of traffic that used to go up and down that North Service Road with eighteen-wheeler trucks and lots of cars going into the restaurant in and out day after day. Uh the facility was open twenty-four hours a day. There was traffic going up and down that road uh twenty-four hours a day, uh seven days a week. So we're doing our traffic studies. Uh we're gonna do things right. I I believe the 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 professionals are doing their work. Uh I'm not a traffic expert. I can't tell you if it's gonna be too congested. They'll tell us if it's gonna create too much congestion. I do know that we are looking at other forms of transportation and I I believe our uh transit on demand is starting to take hold already. I've heard some really good things. So people living in a in a condo at uh three ninety-eight North Service Road might want to use transit on demand instead of using their vehicle. And maybe they don't need two or three vehicles. They don't need four vehicles. They only need one now because it's five or ten years from today that this is all going to evolve. And that go station is going to be there. But if we keep resisting uh developments, and this would be the last development in that section of the West End, there isn't any more lands left. This is it. This is the only piece of property. I know that on the north side of the Q E W that's gonna be developed. It's so it's not like we're gonna see another three or four developments like this. This is it. There's no more than this. Uh we're gonna finish that West End waterfront trail, which is gonna be great for our community. Uh we're gonna bring employment to our community. And we're suffering right now with a shortage of inventory in this town, and the prices of homes are becoming unaffordable, just completely unaffordable. We we just don't have enough places for people to live in our beautiful community. And and we're not bringing in twenty, thirty thousand people. This is going to be, what, three thousand people? And it's gonna take uh several years to build. It's not gonna be there next year. It will take many years to complete this uh whole complex. So I I just want to say I'm going to support it tonight. I think it's the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dunstall. Council Cadwell?
Yes, uh thank you, Mayor Jordan, for the opportunity to speak. Question I do have, and I heard uh Council Dunstall mention three thousand people. I was about the uh presentation notes that we received. In twenty, June of twenty eighteen, a proposal was twelve hundred and forty-seven units. Now, the new proposal was uh twelve eighty-seven, so that's forty more units. So I'd be interested in knowing approximately how many people uh will be living in the area because where I have some very strong concerns is the town's infrastructure, the sewage system, uh water, not a problem. You're right next to the water treatment plant. So uh but I do have a lot of concerns with the growth that has been happening in the West End. Uh just even with Aquazool now, I believe that place is uh very well or will be well occupied. Now we have the Odyssey being built on Winston Road, which I think is twenty or twenty-two stories. Again, the number of people, the infrastructure, all the uh the pressure and stress on the town's infrastructure. So uh what I would like, uh before I I move forward with any type of uh presentation report, is I I needed some assurance from staff and from the from the region with regards to the infrastructure being able to handle all this new development. Again, we're looking at the proposed Casablanca development, uh Open House, twenty-fourth of September. You know, so uh I'm very, very concerned about our infrastructure. I mean, I spent fourteen years working for the town in the water and sewer department. So this is I'm pretty uh it's changed, don't get me wrong, but I understand. I I know the uh I know the ins and outs about the about that. So uh, yeah, that's uh that's very bothering for me. Uh and I'm sorry, very concerning with all this development. Uh even now, as as we speak, the uh the regional uh uh pumping station that is uh and just across from the Bolin Alley and Ontario and uh the uh the Robinson Street North uh road allowance, there's an odor coming from it. So again, is our can our infrastructure handle this development? And so, yeah, I'll stop there on that again, but I I I'll just not be stuck on repeat. But I would love to uh get a report and get some uh assurance from our staff, from the region, that our infrastructure can handle all these proposed developments. Because that's a lot of people coming in the area. So also, uh the uh the height, I have some concerns with the height. I've always been a strong proponent proponent of our official plan, which states maximum height of twelve. I know we haven't been able to keep that in line over the past years, which has been frustrating too. So uh again, amendments, amendments to change uh our official plan that in twenty fourteen, we had it upgraded uh to the level with accepted by the region, the province. Cost us two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. We throwing that money away because developers are coming in for amendments, you know? Our OP is in black and white. This is what we want to see built. But anyways, I that's where I have some concerns and issues with the height again, the density. Uh the trail was brought up. I was reading through the report and I wondered too why the trail would continue across the water treatment plant and then over another ditch, which is on the east side of the water treatment plant. So uh if that could be brought to Lincoln to the North Service Road uh uh just east of the property, I I think that to me is a would be a good solution there. Excuse me, I wrote I wrote a few things down uh in the traffic studies. Um if there's more traffic studies to be done, uh I'm sure there's been some done already, you know, because the of the age of this development going back the number of years. But I I hopefully and I traffic studies in the future, I don't see them being done too quickly because of COVID. You're not gonna get the exact numbers of uh, you know, with everything happened through our pandemic, with people not going to work, people not going out as much. So anyways, uh I'll look forward to that in the future too. So uh I'll uh I'll stop there and uh thank you for the opportunity.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you, Council Cadwell, for your questions. So if I have them correctly, the first one is about infrastructure. The second one is about OP amendments specifically related to height. The third one is about the continuation of the trail into Lincoln, and the fourth one is traffic. So I'll start with the first one, which is the infrastructure question. And as you rightly pointed out, Council Cadwell, the region looks at our reports with that lens on, and they haven't identified any issues with infrastructure. They feel we're well-positioned to deal with this growth in that neighborhood. They're a reviewer to the report and their comments are included in the report itself. And if Paul wanted to add anything else to that, he can in terms of what their comments are, but they are, of course, a critical component of any review that we do, especially with that infrastructure lens on. And then the OP piece uh with respect to the height, the trail and the traffic, Paul, I think we can hand those to you to take over. Thank you.
Uh certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor. As I said in my presentation, we look seriously at the height issue because we we developed the the uh the maximum height and when we developed the Winston Road secondary plan a number of years ago now, that was well before um the the growth, the um the go station was announced. It was before the change in the PPS uh provincial planning uh statement, provincial policy statement, well before the growth plan um that uh growth plan twenty nineteen, which put a more focus on intensification around major transit stations. Uh with the future uh with the go station coming to Casablanca, um this is why we need to relook at it. Does does the twelve-story still make sense? And in some cases, it would. Uh but in and some of the buildings are twelve stories. But in this location, uh within that uh walking distance to the transit station, uh within the uh the five to eight hundred meters that that calls for and without any impact caused by the higher height, we're satisfied that that makes sense in this context. Times have changed since we first originally wrote that Winston Road secondary plan. Um and turning and uh in terms of the trail linkage to North Service Road, I think Mr. Aston responded to that. Uh when we do the site plan approval, we will look at exactly how to get the the trail through the site. Uh but it does make sense not to align it along an area that's not visible to the public. You need safety on that trail and and the location potentially through what he called the flex street makes a lot of sense. But again, that would be looked at and confirmed through the site plan approval process. Um and the last one, then the traffic studies, uh it's the MTO and your staff are are satisfied so far. Um as as the site plan is is finalized, uh as we get through the conditions for draft by approval, more traffic studies we done uh to confirm that. So it's not because they have to address the condition of draft by approval, it's not finalized until those conditions are are satisfied, the satisfaction of MTO, the satisfaction satisfaction of your staff. So there's still that uh requirement for them to be satisfied. There's still more work to be done until they're satisfied that traffic will work, access is appropriate. I think that covers everything, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add a couple of points there? And sorry for my video.
Certainly.
Um, thank you. Uh just on the height, I just want to go back to if you if council will recall, we had a presentation at the public meeting where we looked at how the site could potentially develop under this twelve twelve-story condition uh with slab buildings or different building configurations, essentially right to uh the hazard limit or the the setback limits. So when we're talking about height, uh we're talking also about that in the context of how we're trying to create uh the space associated with the waterfront and the trail and transition the height away from that to the service road. And that was one of the key design considerations for the site and why there's height go at 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 the North Service Road. And then it really steps down to really a podium scale or three-story scale with the townhouses across the waterfront or the open space. So that was, you know, really a design So that was, you know, really a design factor associated with the request for the height increases versus pushing the buildings right up to a twelve story condition up to the waterfront. So I just wanted to fly back, because I think that's key when we talk about height increase and how the overall site functions and works in context of what the North Service Road integration is like, you know, busy service road highway frontage versus transitioning back down to the waterfront, open space, and and trail condition as part of the discussion.
Thank you, Dave. Up next, Councilor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say that thank you all for the presentations. One thing that I really, really do appreciate here is that I believe the this this property here is a bunch of brownfields and taking brownfields and turning it into a development of some kind is greatly appreciated. I think I think that it'll look great for our town. However, I do hear a lot of concerns with fellow councilors. And, you know, I share some of those concerns as well. I don't think that that the vibe that I listening to right now, I think that maybe there's a little bit more work that still needs to be done on this. And I'd like to put a a motion to defer this.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that motion through.
All right, we have a motion. Everyone's spoken for a first time, so we have a motion to defer by Councilor Ritchie, seconded by either Councilor Frake or Councilor Vane. I don't know who was first. The clerk is just preparing that now. Yeah, sure. Moved by Councilor Ritchie, seconded by Councilor Frake. Resolve that report PA twenty dash nineteen be deferred. Councilor Bothwell.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, when you have a deferral, I like to put like a timeline on it.
All right.
I would say that defer for two months or less if staff and and the Sandy Holmes there were, sorry, I forget what the it's then if they want to come back earlier. So when somebody, when when there's a little more work done to it, so two months or less, if that's sufficient.
Okay. Councilor Frake, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I think a minimum, I was saying a minimum of two months.
So minimum two months or two months or less?
Minimum two months. Hopefully, that's okay with you, Councilor Ritchie.
Yeah, you know what? I would actually, I I'd like to ask the Sandy or, you know, some of the representatives here, what what they think might be appropriate.
All right, open it up for people to ask.
I think it's fair to say, sorry, Mr. Mayor, that it's it was appropriate for us and our constituents. And I think that that's the key. And so cut it whichever way you want. I think we need to give as much time as we can to this, and I think two months is good. Asking someone else now to come up with a lesser number or a lesser time period, I think is is would be wrong. I think two months or more.
I I tend to agree that two months is is appropriate right now. It's going to take certainly some time to to move forward with the number of questions that council does have. So I I think two months is fair.
So two months then. Thank you.
All right. I'll read it again then. Moved by Councilor Ritchie, seconded by Councilor Frake. Resolve that report PA twenty nineteen be deferred for two months. Recorded vote, Councilor Bothwell.
Yes.
Councilor Dunstall?
No.
Councilor Frake?
Yes.
Councilor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councilor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilor Sharp?
Yes.
Councilor Vane?
Yes.
Councilor Vardy? Councilor Vardy?
Yes.
And myself, I'm a yes, so that's carried. So you don't need that. Up next, we have a report FCR twenty dash zero seven, the fire command vehicle. Just need a mover and seconder to get it on the table and Councilor Frake and Councilor Vane. Acting Chief Thompson, you're here to speak on it? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I guess it's it's this this report was basically to replace our two thousand and ten vehicle that requires about three to four thousand dollars work at this time and and we had approved in the budget to replace. So we're taking the money from reserves, which is just under a million dollars at this time, and we're staying within the budget allowed. I'll take any questions, your worship.
Great, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Councilor Sharp, are you asking questions for this or was it not? Was that? Okay, all right. So it looks like those were from the last round. Councilor Vardy?
Thank you. I I guess my question is because we really still don't know the status of where we're at with how much we might be in the hole for COVID nineteen this year. Is there any way that this could be delayed until next fiscal year? Just for a few months so that we can see where we're at, first of all. I know there's money in in reserves, but money has just been parked in reserves from the the two million that was surplus from last year. So I mean, can can this be delayed without causing, you know, a detriment to the public?
Through you, your worship. Thank you, Councilor Vardy, for the question. Just so you're aware, this is coming from the Fire Department Vehicle Reserves specifically meant. And we have a million dollars in it, just under a million right now, and this vehicle is needed. I'd rather do it now instead of putting money into repairing a vehicle that may not even last another year.
Could it could it last another three and a half months?
As I said, I'm just making the recommendation that I would like to still move forward with this vehicle at this time, as it's coming from Fire Department reserves.
Thank you.
Councilor Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Good report, chief. The only the only question I do have, and I again, I don't want to I don't want to have any safety issues involved or anything like that, but I see that of the savings. Is there any, sorry, is there any equipment from the old, from the vehicle that can be used to the new vehicle? And I get, you know, your your report shows what equipment will be included, and I that's great. But is there anything that can be can be salvaged, so to speak, from the the other vehicle? That's it. Thank you.
Through you, your worship. Actually, Councilor Cadwell, there will not be anything that can be salvaged from these vehicles. The technology changes so much, as you are aware, and we just have to stay up with the technology, as you know, and fire vehicles and the complacency for meeting the requirements for health and safety.
Councilor Vane?
Thanks, chief, for the report. My question, actually, and while you may know it, chief, I just want to get clarification from the town manager. The money that is in this Fire Department Reserve Fund, and chief, feel free to answer if you know the answer, cannot be used anywhere else other than for fire equipment. Is that correct? Even if we needed a million dollars to save the town from something next
Through your worship, I'm going to pass that one to our treasurer, who's beside me, and he can answer that.
Thank you. Stephen?
Councilor Vane, yes, actually, that those funds can can actually be used for anything. It is just, it's a reserve, not a reserve fund. So funds that are in reserves can be spent for anything that council deems appropriate.
Okay, thank you. My next question, again to the chief. From a liability perspective, would the town be liable if we fail to replace this truck now? Would it be liable in any way if the truck, would the truck be in a position that it could fail, that a newer truck would not? That type of thing, is it is it going to put us in a liable situation? I know with water, for example, if we have certain requirements underwater, we must approve them, or else we face liability. In this case here, somebody's not muted, somebody please. I would, is it is there a position where we could be liable?
Through your worship, Councilor Vane, I would say at this time, definitely we're not liable. We have a great town mechanic. He evaluates the vehicles, and during his preventive maintenance, he evaluated what is happening to this vehicle, and that's why it's come to my attention that it needs significant word to the front end. The vehicle's ten years old. We had a replacement. We had it budgeted in the twenty twenty budget to replace this vehicle. So the timing's actually perfect.
Thank you, chief.
Councilor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I wish I had taken a little more, you know, I didn't realize, you know, pushing it off and so forth. Because there's another component in here that comes up later on in our agenda that if we move ahead with, it could mean a lot of work on this vehicle right now for nothing, because if we're going to get new equipment into another the other component, if this council's wishes is to move in that direction, then there's going to be an overhaul, and there's no better time to do it with a new vehicle than at that, instead of moving it into the old vehicle than taking out, moving it into a new vehicle and so forth. So I don't, and I just wanted to see what the chief's comments are on that. I know that you can't speak, you don't know what the wishes of council will be in the future. But again, I think that I just think that there'd be a lot of work done to this old vehicle that if we put, you know, in the future, three months, whatever it may be, if we do, if we get a new vehicle to transition the old vehicle to new equipment and then have to transition it again, if there's a way that all that timeframe could work out and be seamless, I think that's that's the perfect time for to achieve this vehicle. So I just I'm just curious as to what the chief might have to say about that. Because once you, once you purchase the vehicle, then there's always a transition phase, and that will take some time. And if we pass some things that happen or on our agenda for later on in this session, it makes it makes sense to purchase this vehicle within the next month or so to set it up for for the possibility of new equipment. So I'm just curious what the chief might have to say about that.
Through your worship, Councilor Ritchie is absolutely correct. To make this seamless, this would assist if council approves the other recommendation tonight, make it much easier and seamless when we do move forward. And if we if we go another route, fine, we put that equipment in, but if it does have to come out, there's more incurred costs that we didn't need to do.
Thank you, Chief Thompson. Seeing no, oh, Councilor Frake, you'd like to speak again?
I haven't spoken yet, Mr. Mayor. But thank you. A quick question to chief. If you place the order for this particular piece of equipment tomorrow, when do you expect delivery of it? What's the what's the lead time for delivery of a vehicle like that?
Through your, through your worship, I'm expecting we could see this at the end of the fourth quarter, possibly in December. If not, it will be pushed to twenty twenty one. It depends on the vehicle that we recommended and what they have in stock at this time. But I have been told it won't be immediate. I'm be looking at December, possibly January.
Okay, can I, sorry, carrying along on the same thing, thought process. So do we have to pay all of that money upfront as soon as we place the order?
Through your worship, we pay it on delivery.
Okay, so the money won't get spent till next year anyways. So if we need to access the reserve, we can if we need to? Stephen?
Yes, potentially, you could access those funds again, but those funds were purposefully put away specifically for fire fleet replacement. That replacement, there's a schedule for the replacement of fleet. And if we drain that reserve of those funds, it throws off our replacement schedule for the fire fleet.
Yeah, not suggesting we drain the fund. I'm just trying to find you creative ways of saving a few dollars here for the that we can, we don't have to spend upfront. We will probably be into, will be, hopefully, into our next budget process before this even gets spent. Is that right?
Yes, we we will be starting the budget process, you know, in this fourth quarter for twenty twenty one.
And can, I guess, going along the same lines, can can this can this piece of equipment be negotiated to be paid out in installments, or does it have to come out in one lump sum?
Yeah, one lump sum on delivery.
Can we lease these kind of vehicles?
Through your worship, yes, Councilor Frake, we can lease vehicles. And I believe in the past, the town has experimented with that, and I don't know to what success. We'd have to ask the Building Department and other departments, I believe, that did that in the past, Stephen.
Can we can we look at maybe the lease of this vehicle, which will spread the money out over a longer period of time? It's I'm just throwing things out here for you guys to think about before we, you know, willingly a million dollars.
Through your worship, Councilor Frake, the problem with leasing a fire command vehicle like that is the specialties of it. They do install almost like a police vehicle. It is a police vehicle, basically. That's why the PI is in there. It comes with specialty lighting and wiring, everything that goes into it. So to lease a vehicle and then give it back after a lease is going to be very difficult.
Well, can we not lease it to buy it?
I haven't explored that option, sir.
It might be something to consider. I I'll just leave that with you guys to figure out. But I mean, I think that lease to buy is is usually a good way to go when you're when you want to, you know, like, preserve your cash flow. And I know Stephen is trying to say something there, and I can't hear him. So maybe he can reflect on that for me, too?
No, I was just, I was just mentioning that, you know, we'd be paying financing charges if we're going to lease, if we have the money. We might as well just go in and purchase the vehicle. As well with leasing, public corporations don't really reap the benefits, the private corporation would, because the tax benefits for private corporations on leasing, because we don't pay income tax. So a lot of times, a private corporation will lease because of the tax benefits. Also, you might want to consider how long we keep the vehicle for. In most cases, we keep the vehicle for for ten years. So we're basically we're exhausting its useful life. Usually, if if you lease, you know, you might, you're 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 only paying a portion of the the price of the vehicle, and then the expectation is you renew the vehicle within about four or five years. But if our intention is to keep the vehicle for a longer period of time, I would recommend we buy, we purchase.
Okay, can I just suggest that or we defer this till the next meeting and ask you guys to come up with a couple of other different options of how we go about this? I I mean, I certainly do want to approve it without a question, but I do not want to see our Fire Department suffer for the right type of equipment. But I think that we should go back to the drawing board and look at another couple of options, and we may end up in the same place at our next meeting. But we're only talking a month. So if we can do that, I I think, and if the council and the rest of the folks would go along with me, I think that would be probably a good, useful thing to do. Anyways, I'll throw that out there, and hopefully, we can come to, I'd like to pass a motion along those lines that we do amend and maybe come back in a month with a couple of options. And as I said, if we come up with the same, if it ends up being in in the same place that we are tonight, then fine, we'll just approve it and go ahead.
Yeah, my only concern on that is if there's work that has to be done right away. Are we going to have to spend the three to four thousand dollars in repairs to keep this vehicle on the road? When quite easily, we when quite easily we can move forward with the purchase? It has been in reserves.
Look at other options. And we're talking a month. Certainly, one month is not going to, is not going to really kill us. And at least we'll have seen other options if there are any. And I I'll ask the chief, I mean, is another month going to really put us in jeopardy?
Through your worship, if it's delayed by another month, that vehicle will come off the road immediately until it's fixed. So I can stand by the recommendation. I worked with our procurement manager, and we found the best purchasing through the Police Cooperative Purchasing Program, which is a tender process throughout Ontario. We've used it in the past to find significant savings, and we're within budget, and it's in the reserve. So I can stand by the recommendation at this time that we move forward tonight.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, I don't come from that, from the firefighting industry. So, I mean, we we pay you the big money so that you can, so you can make, you can convince us that this is the right thing to do. So we have to place our our confidence in what you're saying, and also, of course, in our our treasure for the money that's being spent. So, you know, it's a pity we we can't take another month to find the other options. But if you really, really feel on your hand and your heart, this is what we have to do, then then I'll go on with it.
Thank you, I do.
Counsel Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. So with regards to this, personally, I don't really care whether we wait a month or whether we approve it now. Aside from the fact that I don't know the, all the details of our budgeting and our reserves, but if we're if we're saving for a for a replacement vehicle, and if we have some kind of like a reserve management, like, or a budget for our reserves, then you know, a $42,000 vehicle after 10 years is worth $4,200 a year. And if we've been putting that $4,200 away in our budgets, then we should replace it, right? I drive vehicles until they're 10 years old. And I tell you, around year eight or nine, like, you start to wonder, will this make it without any significant repairs? Of course, the vehicle will make it to 10 years, but but around year eight or nine, I find like, oh, man, I hope I don't have to do like $2,500 worth of work, because that happens, right? And if and if I am in, say, year eight, or currently, this vehicle's in year 10, and like, you just, when it happens, it happens, right? You're like, you go to start the car, it doesn't start. You're like, oh, man, so you tow it to wherever, and they figure out what's wrong, and they're like, okay, $2,500, and so you end up spending it just so that you can get back on the road. You have to, but that's $2,500 that comes out of your next vehicle, right? So if I'm saving for my next vehicle, and I get hit in year nine or year 10, this vehicle's in, then you can take 10%, 8% off of your next vehicle, or essentially, you're adding 8% to the cost of the last vehicle. And if we have the reserves, if we've scheduled a purchase of a vehicle, I think, why not do it now? Thanks.
Before I go for the second round, is there anyone in the first round who hasn't spoken yet that wants to speak? Seeing none, Counsel Vardy?
Yeah, just a just a quick question is, I mean, I'm in support of purchasing a vehicle. I don't have an issue with that. My only concern is this year's cash flow because of COVID and what we might have to do. So I'm always looking at expenses that we could defer to next fiscal year so that it gives us a little room if we have shortfalls this year. So is it possible to order it and say, I'd like it delivered January 1st?